All right, I see 7:00 PM. Let's go ahead and start get going on this, the fifth day of the new year, January 2021. Again, Happy New Year to you all. Welcome once again. I'll call the meeting to order and I will lead a roll call, please.
Chairman, Councilman, I mean, excuse me, Chairman McCormick?
Here.
All right, old habit. Chairman Hernan? I mean, Commissioner Hernan? Commissioner Jackson? And Chairman Solis?
I see Commissioner Walter also is already on.
Commissioner Beeler? Can you hear us?
He's on mute.
He's on mute.
Hello?
I heard that was the number one phrase of 2020. You're on mute.
Commissioner Beeler?
I'm here. I don't know why it's not, can you hear me?
We can hear you now, sir. Chairman, you have a quorum.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate that. Let's go ahead. Item number two is a consideration of the minutes from December 1. Hopefully, you had an opportunity to review. If so, I'd entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes December 1.
We have a motion in a second, but we do have an amendment. Ryan, will you please read the amendment?
Yes, I received the email from Mr. Ackley.
Who was that?
I received an email from Mr. Ackley asking for clarification on page... Excuse me, let me look at this. These are probably the most extensive minutes of a zoning meeting we've had in a while. One, two, three, page five. In reference to the last section, number two, overwhelming support and already had... That he'd like to clarify more than 50% of property owners' signatures in the proposed new district.
Do you want to get on the side? Your name is... You have a Zoom on your phone?
Add equity correction.
I have Zoomed it out, my name on it.
With the addition of amendment, we have a motion in a second. Any discussion? 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 See no discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed? Motion carries. We'll move on to the first item, item number three. Discussion and possible action on whether to recommend to the city council amendments to the zoning ordinance to create an RR rural residential zoning district to include the use, building area, height, area, construction material, fencing, vehicle parking, and storage, and other regulations for an RR rural residential district. At this point, we go straight into the discussion. And I am open to hear. Mr. McCormick, you've been actively involved in this situation. We'd like to hear your comments first, sir.
I appreciate that. I've looked over the revised copy that I received from Mr. Rappley in the packet. And I only find a couple of things that I would try to make an improvement on. I think that it appears appropriate that we might do this, make this recommendation to the city council for several reasons. One is that the area we're talking about has severe drainage problems. The second is that the streets in that area generally are no more than about 20 feet wide, in some cases, less than that. So traffic is an issue.
You're making a motion.
And I'm not making a motion at the moment because I don't think everybody has had an opportunity to discuss this. But I would like to consider a...
You can start the questions, Commissioner, by placing it in order so that we can at least have an item that we would discuss. So it would not be inappropriate for you to make a motion and we get a second and we'll have the discussion accordingly.
Okay. Let me offer my two amendments and I'll make a motion, including the amendments to the written version. Section 50-391B. I would change to... I would change to read simply, the following uses are allowed if a special use permit, parentheses, SUP, parentheses, closes, approved by the city council in accordance with this chapter. In other words, I would delete municipally owned buildings and structures are permitted in the RR rural residential district. Based on my conversations with Mr. Schnall and with Chairman Solis, the less law we make, the better, I think. And I don't think we need to put anything in for the city because there is no chance that he's going to build anything in this area.
So you are proposing the elimination under 50-497. The second use, which is any use of public building or public utility directed or used by the city or county government, be stripped from this ordinance, correct?
No. I'm talking about 50-391 in Exhibit A.
Let me get to 391. I apologize, I was looking at the wrong one. That is immediately the first one there. The top of the page. So it's section B, municipally owned buildings and structures are permitted in the RR rural district. You're asking us to extract that?
Yes. I would delete municipally through in addition, comma. And have the sentence start with a capital T, the following uses are allowed.
Okay.
The minimum lot area under...
Hold on a second. I want to go step by step. So Mark, if it is correct, if we're going to go step by step, then I'll go ahead and eliminate this and not do it in whole? We do it item by item?
No, sir. I think what Mr. McCormick suggested he would do is let the commission know what his two changes that he'd like to see in the ordinance, in this exhibit to the resolution. He wants to let you all know what those two changes are. And then what I heard him say was that he would then make the motion to adopt the resolution. I think the resolution does have a number on it. To adopt resolution number 2021-01-05A with the two changes that he's going to discuss. He just told you the first change in 50-391B. And I believe he was ready to make the other change to 50-394, sub paragraph F as in Frank.
Right. The consideration of F, Adam F is the minimum lot area. We had discussed previously one acre. The fact is that the diagram that we have attached to this shows the average lot size in that area is 1.29 acres. In fact, there's only, there's an additional 27 acres that is owned by the Bakers. That is included in that number. And if you take that 27 acres out, the average lot size over there is only .9 acres. So I think we can reduce the size that we would require. And I would recommend that we use 3/4 of an acre, or 32,670 square feet. So I would amend that to read, all building lots in this district shall contain not less than 32,670 square feet, parentheses, .75 acre.
Right. Ryan, are you notating these or do you have them?
Sorry?
I am just clarifying with the city manager that he has notated what you are recommending.
Yes.
Thank you, sir. Anything else?
That again is based on my conversations with Mr. Schnall and considerations of the impact on the property owners over there. This will accomplish, I believe, all of the goals of the property owners who signed off on the resolution. And still not infringe unreasonably on the property rights of the majority of property holders over there in that area. So that's my second one. And now the motion that I would make is that I would recommend, a move that we recommend to the city council, that they consider and approve the creation of a district RR in accordance with the provisions of resolution number...
All right, so I have a motion.
In accordance, including my amendments just made.
That is correct. The motion, along with the amendments that have been made by Commissioner McCormick, to recommend to the city council the creation of RR rural residential zoning district. I'll need a second. We have a motion in a second, so therefore, let's continue with the discussion. I do have citizens that have been signed up.
Mr. Jackson, you bade the second?
Mr. Hernan.
Mr. Hernan, second, okay.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Does this rural residential district affect anything more than what is designated on the schematic as area number one?
Mr. Jackson, this resolution doesn't designate any area schematic. The schematic you're referring to is not being considered under this agenda item. If the resolution is adopted by the zoning commission, and then if the city council votes to amend the zoning ordinance to create the RR district, this commission will be asked to return in February to initiate a discussion on what area the zoning commission thinks is appropriate to be placed in the RR district. After that discussion, staff will move forward with the formal notifications required under our zoning ordinance and under Chapter 211 of the Local Government Code to give public notice of the possible change in zoning of those properties which the zoning commission believes would be appropriate to be placed in or rezoned RR rural residential. Tonight, it's about Mr. McCormick's motion. That's what our agenda says. You all would consider whether to make a recommendation to the city council to create the RR district. Mr. McCormick has made a motion, Mr. Hernan has seconded, to move it that far tonight.
Yeah, and just for clarification, there is still work to be done beyond this first step. This step is the boundaries and other areas of which we have to further discuss. So in essence, we're putting it together for the first opportunity just to get this going. So at this time, since we have a motion on the floor in a second, I want to go to citizens who have been asked, who have signed up to speak. And that is Dr. Ackley. And did you hear clearly the amendments and everything that was taking place? I'm sure you're familiar with them already.
I'm sorry, sir.
Did you hear clearly the amendments that were also made and everything that you're fully understanding of that, correct?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
I did hear that. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Stephen Ackley, 118 West Castle Lane. In the petition, we had said that we would like a minimum lot size of one acre. But I think speaking for myself and I think most of the people here, that the 3/4 acre amendment that Mr. McCormick has done will satisfy all the needs that we were on that. And we fully endorse, or I fully endorse, the concept of the rural residential district.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Garcia? Jane Garcia?
Mr. Solis, I know you asked a second ago if we clearly understood the changes that Skip recommended. And I saw Peter shake his head. Can we go through them one more time so we hear them again?
Yeah, Mark, do you want to read them again or skip?
I can do it if you like.
Yes, sir, please do.
Okay. The first proposed change, Ms. Garcia, is to page one of the Exhibit A attached to the resolution. And that's in section 50-391, which concerns use regulations. Section B presently reads municipally owned buildings and structures are permitted in the RR rural residential district, period, in addition, comma, the following uses are allowed. And it goes on from there. I propose to delete the sentence reading municipally owned buildings down through in addition, comma, and have the sentence read, the following uses are allowed if a special use permit, parentheses, SUP, is approved by the city council in accordance with this chapter. And as I think I explained, the reasons for that are, first of all, Chairman Solis has indicated his reluctance to create any law that's not necessary. In my discussions with Mr. Schnall, he says that probably is not necessary because, first of all, the city is really extremely unlikely to build anything in this area one west of west. Secondly, putting restrictions on the city council or municipal authority downstream is not necessary at this point. And the change that I would have added would be to, if we were to leave that in, would have to deal with the places of assembly. And that has become an issue here lately. The court case in Austin on it. I think the case was badly decided because, as to quote Wilford Remley, "The Constitution don't say that, counselor." So I think deleting this clarifies it, but doesn't create any additional law that we don't need. If there is something the city needs to do at a later time, the city can always take steps to give itself permission to do whatever is necessary. But at this point, we don't need to put that in, so I'm thinking it out. The second proposed change is section 50-364F concerning the minimum lot area in that area west of west. What we have in the original draft was 43,560 square feet was the minimum lot area. That's one acre. I propose to change that to 32,670 square feet, which is .75 acre. The reason is that many of the lots in that area are less than one acre. And so if we make the minimum lot size .75 acre, we will infringe less on the property rights of the landowners in that area than we would if we set the property, the minimum lot size at one acre. The reason that the attachment, the diagram on it, mentioned 1.29 acres is because that includes the 27 acres owned by Quentin and Janet Baker. So those .75 acres I consider to be a necessary improvement, limiting the stretch of the focus on the lot size. Does that help?
Yes, sir, it sure did. Are there any other questions?
No, that's it.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Dr. Ackley?
I don't want to speak on anything, so. I said, yeah, item four. Now I got to figure out what I'm going to say.
Good evening, zoning commissioners and chairman. I'm Jacqueline Ackley at 118 West Castle Lane. I want to thank all who have worked on this Exhibit A draft. And I would just like to say I support what it says, including those amendments made by Mr. McCormick. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Mr. Martinez? You're back. What?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, first and foremost, Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
Second, I would, I support the motion with the amendments and would urge the zoning commission to do the same. I think it's truly needed and I applaud your efforts and your patience with us, so thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Let's go back to discussion amongst the commissioners. Mr. Beeler, any comments?
I do. I'm curious to know how many homes, as was my, I guess, one of my initial concerns, is, God forbid, the tornado comes and wipes out any of these homes. How many of these homes, well, in the... I know we're not talking about an area right now, but, you know, we are. And how many of these homes in this area, the lot sizes are under the 3/4 of an acre? Do we know?
No, I don't believe we do. I can't give you...
Mr. Mrs. Ackley has a response. Mr. Ackley, please come to the mic if you can answer the question. And this would lend itself to having a discussion about a grandfather clause. And we need a little definition on that to make sure. But please, there was a direct question.
Good evening again. Yes, Mr. Beeler, we did hear and understand and take to heart your comments from the last discussion on this subject. And Stephen Ackley has gone through with the map and written down from Barapresa District, the actual lot size of every single piece of property.
Wow.
West Avenue. And he has drawn up statistics and numbers of the lots that are less than various cutoffs. The raw data is in that red bag, both handwritten and typed. If you give my husband a second and his eyeglasses, he can answer Mr. Beeler's question.
Sure. While we wait for that answer, let's listen for Mr. Baker, who's also on the list of those to speak. Mr. Baker? On four? Okay, so we'll just go ahead. Mr. Beeler, they're looking for the number. Do you have other questions?
No, no, that was my particular concern. My concern being, you know, how many potential variances, I guess I would have, that would be with the Board of Adjustment, but special use permits or otherwise, we'd be seeing in the future based on rebuilding or demolition of a property in anticipation of building a new home on it.
Mr. Chairman, may I respond?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Beeler, in the past five years, we have had one house in the city of Castle Hill that I understand has been destroyed and rebuilt. I don't know that there was a necessity for them to go to the Board of Adjustment. But I think that one of the things that we might consider at some point is to ask the city council to provide some guidance to the Board of Adjustment in the event that there is a house destroyed and needing to be rebuilt with a variance allowance for some deviation to the lot size or other requirement.
I would also think...
I would, I guess I would comment that that's exactly what they're planning on doing with the property at the corner of Zornia, which was a subject of a prior meeting. You know, they're raising the house and going to be, you know, presumably building another one, although that lot is over 3/4 of an acre.
I would ask legal, what I'm thinking is that perhaps we just need to include a grandfather clause directly that states if the lot is less than one acre at this time, prior to this approval, that they are automatically grandfathered. And then only in terms of the replat, what they have to then adhere to the minimum acreage, right? I mean, that's what it should be. And so is that a necessary amendment, Mr. Shaw, that we have? Yes, sir?
No, I don't think so. I think that this is a concern that's a fair concern. But in a careful review of our nonconforming use statute, it says that nonconforming structures that are destroyed or damaged have to be rebuilt in compliance with current city ordinances. It has nothing to do with the lot size. It has everything to do with what the use was. So if it was a single family use before a tragedy or a catastrophe occurred and it was destroyed by more than 50%, the property owner is limited only to building a conforming structure. And so it's an issue that is unlikely to come up in this context. A remedy would be to look at, perhaps in the future, considering an amendment to the nonconforming use provision in the zoning ordinance. Cannot do it tonight because it wasn't on the agenda, haven't held a public hearing, but...
That may be something that we can bring up when we, the recommendation goes to city council. That may be something they kick back to us to ensure that we can do it at that time. Rather than clog the issue now, we have definitive where to move forward. That may be something as a dangling modifier that we can come back and correct in the future. Mr. Beeler, does that conclude your...
That, it does, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Jackson, thoughts?
My only question is, why do we need this to begin with?
I believe the case has been made over the last two, three public hearings. I understand your observation. Hernan?
I understand this is something that the citizens of the area want. And I don't see why we can't give that neighborhood something, some sort of protection. But I also have the grandfather clause issue in my head. I'm not an attorney, but what I heard read a minute ago sounded to me like you have to bring it up to code. And if the code and the guidelines say it has to be on the 3/4 acre lot, well, then it does. And that's just my take on it. So I would like to see some sort of a grandfather clause. And I'm also a proponent of the 3/4 acre. I do like that number. It feels good. It seems right. I've driven that area dozens of times in the last few months. And I would like to see something added as to the properties that are facing or touching west of it. I think we need to address them separately.
Commissioner McCormick has made some adjustments. You certainly can make your adjustments too, if you'd like to entertain and put in an amendment that would read in terms of a grandfather clause, especially for this rural area, since the city does have so many nuances to it. I'm open to that. And then let's move it through the city council so they can flesh it out. Remember, we're making the recommendation, there still has to be an adoption. And as outlined by our city attorney, it's probably going to come back to us from some greater definition. And we can use that clause as far as an inclusion of a grandfather specifically for this area. And then we would have to be able to debate whether it goes against the nonconforming or whether it has some greater impacts that we have to address also. But I'm open to that, if you'd like to make it.
Yeah, I would like to see in addition that basically grandfather's property is less than 3/4 acre of an acre to being able to rebuild up to the same square footage that they were previous to a fire.
That Mr. McCormick outlined before?
Yeah.
Mr. McCormick, would you accept that also? Or is that something that you'd be liable to having at least open it up in terms of a discussion?
I think I'm with Mr. Schnall on this. I think the best thing to do is to proceed. I'm not sure I want to put in such an amendment tonight, listing any specifics. I would suggest that we recommend to the city council, if they consider any grandfather cause, it might be appropriate for lots on which the housing needs to be rebuilt to protect them from undue...
No problem. Mr. Beeler, your thoughts?
I have the same thoughts. I'm not sure, given Mr. Schnall's guidance, that it's before us or appropriate to do that tonight. But again, I want, you know, my initial concern was that if a bit of catastrophic loss or even a developer comes in and buys a lot that's below the, you know, they can build a home on it by raising the existing structure if they elect to and to build a similar structure on it without cutting the lot any further.
I got you. Dr. Ackley, you had one other comment that you wanted to bring us, that number? Dr. Ackley has a response to Mr. Commissioner Beeler's request.
Yeah, we did a rough, I'm sorry, we didn't bring my summary sheet on this, but just going through the raw data on this, we've come up with roughly 24 lots that are less than 3/4 of an acre out of a... than three-quarters of an acre out of 114 total. So just a calculation indicates around 21%.
Thank you, sir.
Twenty percent of the lots. Can I make another comment regarding?
Please, go ahead.
I defer to Mr. Schnall for the legal expertise in this, but my own feeling on this is that if a homeowner lost his home through this, that even if it had to go to the Board of Adjustment, I think the Board of Adjustment has to consider that it would be undue hardship, both to rebuild the house. And if they denied it, you know, legally it might be considered a taking in some sense because no one would be able to build a house. So I don't think that's a consideration. Further, on the petition that we put in, we said that present lot sizes would be grandfathered. This is what the residents have put forward specifically, is the minimum lot size of one acre. And three-quarters of an acre, I think, is quite appropriate. But we also put in that that the present lot sizes would be grandfathered at their present size.
That was not, that's not in Exhibit A. President, thank you for the comment.
Dr. Ackley?
It was in Mr. Quentin Baker's presentation. That's the wording of the petition was in there.
I believe, Dr. Ackley, please stay forward. Mr. McCormick has a question for you. Go ahead, Mr. McCormick.
Dr. Ackley, when you went back to look at those lot sizes, did you look at the PUD there in the middle of West Avenue that has a number of small lots and small houses built on it, include those lots? Are they part of the 24?
Well, specifically, the petition talked about the streets of South Winston Lane. The short answer is no, but the petition specifically talked about South Winston Lane, West Castle Lane, Hibiscus Lane, and Foxhole Lane and Foxhole Cove. So we didn't consider the PUD in that minimum lot size, nor the houses on Danny Lane, nor any house with a West Avenue address, even though it was on a corner.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Herndon, when I was listening to what you had to say, you were talking about rebuilding of the same square footage of the destroyed property. Do you really want to have a limitation of that square footage?
No, but I want to give them the option of being able to do it without having to get special permission.
Well, what I'm thinking about is if you're building the house and all that good stuff, and you want to increase your square footage by 100 feet, you're going to have to get some sort of special dispensation.
Well, if you're on a lot less than three-quarters of an acre, yes. Because if you're on greater, you can do whatever you want. That's why we need to give them, I mean, if somebody were to have a lot, say, that's a half an acre, and they wanted to build a 30,000-square-foot two-story house on it, you know, it would stop them from doing that.
Gets hard.
Yeah. Well, you can go up.
I believe what we're able to look at is the majority of the commission would like to be able to move forward on what is presented to us today, make a comment to the commission, I mean, to the council, that they perhaps should look at a grandfather clause. And there was one other dangling thing that we needed to be able to address, Mr. Herndon.
Yeah, I wanted to ask Mr. Schnall, is this the appropriate time to ask about or to bring up properties that are facing West Avenue?
How is that addressed?
Or is that just part of the boundaries that we'll discuss later?
I believe that's really part of the boundaries of the land that the zoning commission feels would be appropriate to be considered for rezoning into the RR district. It is not something for this evening because our agenda really doesn't speak to that issue. Members of the commission may have differing views about which property to include. And the commission would have a full opportunity to discuss that, probably at a meeting the first Tuesday in February, and decide, you know, what, at least on a preliminary basis, it would propose for that area, whether it would include properties fronting on West Avenue, either on the east or west side of West Avenue, would be appropriate to be discussed at a future meeting.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I believe we are ready to move forward. However, Mr. Baker, I believe you want to jump in right now. I think everything's ready to rock and roll, sir, and move forward, but you are free to make comments.
Great. Thank you for letting me in. Sorry, I couldn't unmute fast enough when you called on me before. As you know from prior discussions, I strongly support the rural residential district. The amendments that Skip offered are good. I'd sure love to see the one acre, but three-quarters is still a good number, and I can support that. I have a very simple solution to you for this issue of the grandfathering of the lots, and that's to go to Section 50-394, Paragraph F, the one that Skip already mentioned that has the minimum lot size, and simply make that minimum lot size limited to replats of properties. So all you have to do is change and make that applicable to replats. Then that provision doesn't apply to any existing lots that are less than the three-quarters of an acre. Simple language change, make that subject to the replats only, such as saying, "All buildings, all building lots in this district shall not be replatted to less than three-quarters of an acre." That takes care of us.
Except that belongs in the subdivision ordinance, not in the zoning ordinance.
I see. I see. Okay.
But appreciate your comments. We understand where you're going. I believe what the commission is ready to move forward. We have a motion and a second, with the only addition being that we will recommend that the City Council also look at a grandfather clause to be applicable, or the changes that were just made forward. So we have a motion and a section. Any other discussion? 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 See no discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed?
Mr. Solis, since this is a call where not everyone is present, I think a roll-call vote on this issue would be appropriate, just for the record.
Not a problem, sir. Let's take roll call, and please vote accordingly.
Commissioner Jackson?
No.
Commissioner Herndon? Commissioner McCormick?
Yes.
Commissioner Bueller?
Yes.
And Chairman Solis?
Yes. Special, Skip, I want to thank you for your work on getting Exhibit A palatable and moving forward. So thank you for your work, sir. Let's move on to the next item. Item number four is a public hearing on possible amendment to Section 50-497 of the zoning code to revise provisions as to the special uses in zoning districts and to add a provision concerning special uses permit permitted in the new RR rural residential zoning district. Since it is a public hearing, it is, I didn't get the time, 7:38, public hearing is now open, and I do have citizens to be heard. Dr. Ackley, please come forward, sir. And this is in reference to the Section 50-497 of the zoning to revise provisions as to special uses in the zoning districts and to add a provision concerning special uses permitted in the new RR rural residential zoning district that we just approved.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the zoning commission. We strongly endorse the provisions to limit special uses in this. As explained by Mr. Baker in the presentation that he had in the last public hearing, we've basically had 11 or so what regarded as very difficult situations, and fully half of these, at least, are involving special uses. One was the Castle Hills First Baptist Church lawsuit, which ended up in federal court. And I was involved for a period of about five years in the city's negotiation on that. So it's extremely time-consuming. The other was the memory care unit that was there, and various PUDs that have been put in as we regard as special uses. So that protection itself is very important for this area, to limit special uses in this area. And, you know, with the provision that Mr. McCormick put forward about the not having, you know, the exception for municipal buildings, in that is not, you know, is compatible with that, you know, the city can deal with those situations as they arise. But limitations on special uses are very, very important to maintain the integrity of the area. And we fully endorse that that be part of the rural residential district. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next I have Jane, no, excuse me, Mrs. Ackley.
Good evening again. I'm Jackie Ackley from 118 West Castle Lane. SUP restrictions. In the draft, Exhibit A, prepared in the minutes today, under the Paragraph 50-391B, where it talks about use regulations, it was Mr. McCormick's proposal to strike the municipally-owned buildings. And then later on in that paragraph, it says, "In addition, the following uses are allowed if special use permit is approved by City Council in accordance with this chapter. Number one, telephone exchange and telecommunication facilities without business offices, storage. And number two, electric facilities and electrical energy facilities." I think that sums it up. I think there might just be a three added there that other special uses are restricted. And the main reason I say that is, one of the fundamental reasons for making this area, which occupies most of the west of West Avenue neighborhood, into a rural residential area, is because it's geographically distinct from the rest of Castle Hills by three ways. Number one is the narrow lanes there. We just don't have the street width that the rest of the city has, can't support the same burden of traffic. Then we have the septic tanks, which require larger lots. We don't have sanitary sewer. And flooding risk would be increased if we put more dense housing on it. But going back to number one, the narrow streets, the narrow streets and the flooding risk, if you put condensed concrete structures and drives in this area, because there's no storm drains there or culverts, is what has kept most of the other proposals for things like large school on a small block with just fed by narrow lanes. It would be a traffic hazard to the students and their parents, memory care unit, again, traffic coming and going, fire trucks and support services and family members, you know, et cetera. So I think many of the other things that SUPs are issued for, like schools and daycare centers and churches, and I'm sure there are other things I'm not thinking of, but almost all those would require access by traffic that's denser than what this area can bear, based on the narrow lanes that it has. And so for that reason, I would just suggest that we limit SUPs to those two mentioned already in the draft, telephone exchange, electrical facilities, because these might be very necessary for the people there to get their cell phones and their TV service. But put a number three, no other SUPs allowed or other SUPs restricted because of narrow lanes. I'm sure somebody more clever than I can find a better wording for that, but that would be my suggestion in hope. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Martinez? Thank you, sir. Mr. Baker, you have some comments in reference to this action.
Yes, sir. And I understand we're talking about the SUP provision 50-497, is that right?
That is correct, sir.
And I'm going to speak in favor of this resolution. I'm very pleased to see it, and very pleased to see that it includes both Resident or District A and RR. It impacts all the city by including District A. That provides a protection for all areas of the city that are presently residential A from having an SUP encroach on those areas. So I appreciate that both A and RR are included in this resolution and request that you support it.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else on the Internet that would like to speak, anybody in the meeting online that would like to contribute to this conversation? It's a public hearing? Going once? Going twice? That concludes the public hearing at 7:45. We'll move on to item number five with the discussion and possible action on whether to recommend to the City Council amendments to Section 50-497 of the zoning code to revise provisions as to special uses in zoning districts and to add a provision concerning special uses permitted in the new RR residential zoning district. At this point, Commissioner McCormick, why don't you start us off on this area in particular?
Yes, I can do that. This has come up on a number of occasions. There's this Section 497, which is written in such a way that it applies to all districts. And in our case, we have some special use provisions that are different from the other provisions and do not agree with those special uses that are set forth in 497 as applicable to all districts. So putting these in as an exception, that's to say, Section District A and District RR would be exceptions, and 497 would not apply to them. And that would allow the sections which are written specifically for those districts to apply without any conflicting code in the zoning code, which would raise a question as to whether some particular special use applies or not. It was a mistake in the original drafting that that was not corrected, and this serves to correct that. But this doesn't make any change to any of the, any of the current special uses applicable to District A, and it doesn't really make any change to District RR because District RR hasn't been created yet. So it solves a conflict problem in the code, and it's a fairly simple change that identifies those sections which apply to District A and District RR.
Thank you, sir. I have a question before we move on, before we get to the other commissioners. Ryan, can you explain, you know, when you look at this holistically, this, it seems to me, this is a lot larger than just RR area of what we're doing in this, in this recommendation. Am I correct to see that? And so my question becomes, in terms of notification of the overall community, the only people that pretty much have seen this are the people that are proposing the RR district, and I don't know where the rest of the city stands on this. Is this, is this going to affect other areas other than the RR area?
I think it's, Mr. Schnall can probably elaborate, but I think it's specific to the RR. But there was no notices announced as far as letters in this case because that wasn't part of the process. Eventually, we will probably put notification there when we take that next step. I think that's part of the notification. Is that correct, Mr. Schnall?
Yes. And Mr. Solis, to be clear, the only material changes here are to make, are to clarify that in the 50-497A, those rules apply to all districts except A and RR, assuming the RR, as Mr. McCormick suggests, be created. And then sets out in Subpart B, as Mr. McCormick said in his summary, that the uses allowable in the A district are set out in 50-61. That's really not new language. That's, I think, in the current section. And then we added a sentence that the uses allowable in the RR district are set out in 50-391. So this doesn't make any other changes. And I, you know, Mr. McCormick, when he was on the governing body a few years ago, had made the suggestion that this be looked at in a way differently from what the council at the time did. And so what we tried to do here And so what what we tried to do here is to make it very clear what is or is not a proper subject for a special use permit.
Gotcha. Thanks for the clarification. Commissioner Jackson, any words?
So Yes, so if I'm understanding this correctly, this is going to act as a bar to all properties that are zoned A and those that may be zoned RR if created as to the request for a special use permit. Is that correct?
Mostly, yes. But in each instance, if the property is in the A district, the the person interested in a special use permit would look at 50 dash 61. And if it was in the RR district, the person would look to 50 dash 391. And if it were in any of the other districts, they would be looking at 50-497A or 50-497C. Property owners are not being restricted from having a special use permit. They're only prohibited or restricted in regard to what kind of special use they can have. And in the RR district, which was the 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 driving force for our making this recommendation for the commission to consider tonight, in the RR district, it's limited to residences, which don't need a special use permit. And then the electrical and telecommunications facilities, which are set out in 50 dash 391 as the things that a special use permit can be requested for.
So in, I guess, my my home presumably is is zoned A. So the only thing that can be done on my lot ever in the future would be to the the use as a as a single-family residence, period. If I wanted to have a business here, I would have to seek it to be rezoned. Is that is that what we're saying?
No, sir. You can operate a business if it meets our home occupations ordinance. And and there are certain things that you that can be done in the A single-family district with a special use permit.
Sure, I I what I mean is like
Longer list than what's for RR.
I raised my house and I I want to open a restaurant. I I couldn't get a special use permit to do that.
You shouldn't get a special use permit for that. You would need a zoning change for that.
Right, right. But I I
I do want to, the clarification is in reference to the special use permit has been within, yeah, with all things considered, as you are just about to finish, Commissioner, in reference to the fact that it has to have the right zoning, there's a lot of other steps. It doesn't necessarily mean that you can go and pull something out of nowhere and say, now this will be at this location. But then and then you also get the checks and balances of the process itself. The process is an application. There has to be a review of what's applicable, what's not. So the the special use permit, I mean, the special use process is still one that provides, in my estimation, the checks and balances. And this gives a little bit more clarification for people to have a little bit less of a lane to be unwidely, if if you will.
Well, it it bars certain special use permits. From even being, no?
Mr. Chairman, may I address in?
Yes, sir.
Uh, Mr. Beuler, if you look at 60 dash 51, it has all of the current special use purposes that can be put into District A. And in fact, section 50 dash 61 is broader than 50 dash 497. Uh, that's to say that there are more special uses allowable under 50 dash 61 than there are under 50 dash 497. So I think I I I think that what we're doing is clarifying a possible conflict in the code and not make any substantive changes to what can be done in District A.
Okay, that that I guess that 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 was my concern is that we're creating narrower or or, you know, and I guess we are in essence, but I I think that clarifies it. Thank you.
And and Mr. Beuler, just before we leave it, and I appreciate your 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 saying thank you about it. I I think as as Chairman Solis said, the 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 overall scheme of things does protect the neighborhood itself from a use that's totally incompatible. For someone in the middle of a residential block to decide they're going to turn their house into the next, you know, exclusive restaurant, and then went to ask for a zoning change, even if it were somehow approved, it would be subject to legal challenges, spot zoning. And I think like Mr. Solis in indicated, our system has the checks and balances of both commission or or Board of Adjustment and city or city council review to reduce dramatically the risk of something out of line being done. But I agree, though, completely with Mr. McCormick, that in 50 dash 61 in the A district, there are more things that can be done if a party can get a special a special use permit. But the the requirements for a special use permit are significant in any event. The real purpose of this agenda item was to make it clear that in if there is a new RR district, its rules are going to be different. Its rules are going to be what's in 50-391, that you all approved when you adopted the you approve a recommendation when you adopted the prior action item.
Correct. So we have a motion. I need a a motion for this item number five, and I'll need a second.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we recommend to the city council, the adoption of resolution number 2021 dash O1 dash O5 dash B, as set forth in the packet.
Thank you, sir. I'll need a second. I have a motion and a second. Any other discussion, 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 see no discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Last item, item number six.
Chairman, real quick, Commissioner Beuler, did you vote yes?
Um, yes, yes, aye.
Thank you, sir.
I don't think I got my mute off, but
Item number six, discussion and possible action on a recommendation to the city council on the minimum lot area as set out in section 50 dash 64D of the Castle Hills Code of Ordinances. So we've taken steps already in the previous opportunity for us to discuss items two, three, four, and five. So six is a discussion on the recommendation to the city council on the minimum lot area as set out in 50. Now, this is is something that I don't know if it's even applicable at this point from my perspective, right? This is sets out to the whole city, what we're looking at, and I don't think we've had the opportunity to fully discuss it because it really was more relevant to the RR district. And from what I will tell you, commissioners, that I have seen, I've seen no other interest in this minimum lot size issue at all other than the RR, which we have addressed. So from my estimation, I I don't see us needing to continue to study this or have it on our agenda. But what say you? There's no one here for this item at all.
I agree with that. I mean, I think we've addressed questions that came up. And we already have minimum lot size requirements. I don't think that this is something that
And I'm I'm not so I'm not so sure we don't want to at least give it some consideration in that it's going to be a I I would predict a continuing concern throughout the city of of potentially larger lots throughout the entire city being divided or one or two acquired, raised, and and built into your garden home sort of sort of subdivisions or 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 PUD type 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 deals. I I don't know that, you know, and this would be our opportunity to discourage such such actions. I I I don't know. That that was, you know, I I know we it came up regarding in the discussions of the RR. But but it does present this as a opportunity to do that.
What you're saying, Commissioner, and I I don't have a problem. If you want a recommendation, if you want to recommend to the commission that we do public hearings on this special, on just this item by itself without the RR influence, which is what created it in the first place, then so be it, and we will measure then the necessity. So if you want to recommend
Well, I
I I don't have to do that. Let's just put it on our agenda.
I I don't hear people clamoring for it at the same time either. But I I did just want to, I guess, I guess, mention that it is something that that should be, you know, if if there isn't such an interest, then then there's no there's no point in having a bunch of public hearings if if no one's coming.
I agree completely. So my recommendation to this commission is that we just table this or, quite frankly, just kill it because it has
I'll move. We pull this item from the agenda and move on.
I have, I need a second to that. We got a second by Jackson. The motion is to pull it, get it off our agenda. Any discussion, discussion? Commissioner Beuler's notes are taken. Your your comments are noted. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Again, Mr. Solis, could you clarify, or Mr. Rapley, I didn't hear Mr. Beuler's vote?
Oh, uh, I, I mean, they were just go ahead and pull it.
Okay.
Thank you. So so the the commission knows essentially this doesn't, this is not the same as Pope postponing indefinitely, which would have killed it. This leaves it off the agenda, but it can come back on if there's a specific request.
That is correct. I appreciate everybody. Happy New Year to everybody. I'll need a motion to adjourn.
Happy New Year, everybody. So I'm moved.
8:02. I need a second, second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Carries. Thank you all very much. 8:03 PM. Great meeting. Thank you all. Happy New Year.